Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So now, next is roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sanmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
It's the end of roll call.
Thank you very much. City manager, do we have some changes to make?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items to note. One is the addition of the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. And that's listed second on the agenda. You had it before you, but wanted to note that for audience that may be listening. The second is a request to move item 10, the executive session that's planned for this evening, up to item four immediately after public comment. And then all subsequent items would drop one number. And if the...
Did you have a question?
You mean three?
On the...
Then executive session, or you want consent calendar before?
No, 3A, 3A or 4?
Yeah, so immediately after public comment and then consent calendar following your exit to executive session. And if that's comfortable for everybody, then we'll go ahead and make those changes.
All right. Do we have to vote on that?
I think just head nuns is fine.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we just changed our order of our agenda. Next is the proclamation for Native, National Native American Heritage Month. And we are very, very lucky to have a person working with us in our city. And I hope I pronounce these names correctly. I'm happy to present this proclamation to the city's finance director, Janelle Lewis, a Native, an Alaska native who is Koyakon, Athalbaskan, Athbasgaskan. Originally from a small village of about 300 people located in the interior of Alaska called Huslia, Alaska. And I'm going to read the proclamation. It's a little wordy, so it may take a few minutes. City of Mont Lake Terrace proclamation, National Native American Heritage Month, November 2023. Whereas November is National Native American Heritage Month, when our country celebrates the contributions of Native Americans, past and present, and urges the people of the United States to learn more about their culture and sovereignty. And whereas many American Indians in the early 1900s were proponents and advocates of an American Indian Day, including Dr. Arthur C. Parker, a Seneca Indian and director of the Museum of Arts and Science in Rochester, New York, and Reverend Sherman Coolidge, and Arap Paho, and president of the Congress of the American Indian Association, and Red Fox, a Blackfoot Indian who called upon states and the country to recognize Indians as citizens through a proclamation in 1915. And whereas, the first American Indian Day in the state, in a state, was declared on the 2nd of Saturday in May 1916 by the governor of New York. And whereas, it took several more decades for the federal government to formally acknowledge this movement. In 1990, Congress authorized and requested to the president to issue a proclamation designating the month of November 1990 as National American Heritage Month. Congress chose the month of November to recognize the American Indians as a month to, as this month concluded the traditional harvest season and was generally a time to appreciate family, community, and the riches of the land for the American Indians. President George W. Bush issued Presidential Proclamation 6230, which paid tribute to the history and culture of the American Indian tribes. Similar proclamations with variants of the name have been issued every year since 1994. And whereas, the city of Mont Lake Terrace is located on the ancestral lands of the Kofsalis tribes, which included more than 20 tribes and bands of Indians at the time of the Treaty of the Point Elliott, Treaty of Point Elliott in 1855. And whereas, National Heritage, National American Heritage Month invites us to reflect on the rich cultures, languages, skills, and wisdom of the first people on these lands. And whereas, there is a continuous need to evaluate our relationship with the Native Americans in preserving culture, cultures and histories, honoring people's rights and contributions to society, and strengthening our government-to-government relationships. And now, therefore, I, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, mayor of the city of Mont Lake Terrace, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Mont Lake Terrace and encourage our community to join in, join in celebrating the great contributions of the Native Americans to our city, state, and nation. So, how do we want to do this? Okay. And we're going to move on to public comment. Are there any public comments?
No one has signed up in person, but if anyone in the online audience would like to speak, please use the hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. That's the end of public comment.
All right. So now, we're going to move on to executive session. And the purpose of the executive session is for an evaluation of a public employee, and it will take about 30 minutes to begin with. And do I need to open this?
And plan to return at 7:40.
7:40. We should be returning at 7:40 unless we extend it. Thank you. All right, we can all go into the back. I guess, do we need the city manager? We can call the back to order, session back to order.
Recording in progress.
Okay. We're going to call the session back to order, meeting back to order.
No action taken.
No action taken. I didn't think that. All right, and there was no action taken. All right, so, next is the consent calendar.
We don't...
It's not, the next is the consent calendar.
Sorry.
Did you want to do the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendars, item A and B.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then, next is the public hearing and approval of the street vacation for 236 with Sarah Pizzo and Kenan Williams.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I'm an associate planner here, and I'll be going over the 236th Street Vacation for tonight's public hearing. So our agenda tonight, I'll start with an overview of street vacations, provide some general information about the process and where we currently are at, and then present the petition resolution specific to this proposal. And then I'll provide background information on the location, zoning, current use, and development potential related to this proposal. And then provide some considerations for city council and present alternatives and a staff recommendation. All right, so what are street vacations? A street or road vacation occurs when the local government relinquishes its interest in public right-of-way or public service easement on a piece of property. A street vacation does not necessarily remove all encumbrances from the area that's vacated. For example, if there's utilities, those can be reserved so that they can be accessible in the future. And street vacations are typically submitted by owners of property abutting the right-of-way that's proposed for vacation. The petition should explain how future use is not needed and will not negatively impact future public needs. And then the petition is submitted to local government, which has broad discretion to grant, deny, or condition any approval of a street vacation request. And this is governed by Chapter 35.79 of the RCWs. So the process before us and where we currently are, the street vacation petition was received, city council adopt a resolution to set a public hearing date. The public hearing is today, where council will consider the merits of the street vacation. And then council will have an opportunity to adopt the ordinance and vacate the street as it's proposed, adopt an ordinance to vacate a portion of the street proposed, table the proposal and request additional information, or deny the request and not pass the ordinance. As part of the process, I wanted to mention that environmental review is not required. Street vacations are exempt by state law. So the petition before us that we're considering was submitted by property owners Sierra MLT LLC and Whiskey Six LLC. The city clerk on April 13th of this year, 2023, issued a certificate of sufficiency certifying that the petitioners represent 100% of the abutting property ownership. And then on September 18th of 2023, city council passed Resolution Number 887 and set the public hearing date for November 2nd. There was a scripener's error on the public hearing date in the resolution, which was corrected on October 25th to reflect November 2nd today as the public hearing date. So the reason the adjacent property owners would like to vacate a portion of 236th Street Southwest is that they would like to aggregate it with the property adjacent that they already own to allow for a larger parcel and a future mixed-use development that's close to public transit. The map on the right shows the proposed area of vacation in blue, and then the adjacent properties owned by Sierra MLT LLC and Whiskey Six LLC. So some background information about the area of vacation, starting with the location. So this area is located on the southeast corner of 236th Street Southwest and Van Rye Boulevard. You can see an aerial view on the left and a closer-up map view on the right. The area of vacation roughly outlined in pink. The zoning adjacent to this property is Town Center 1, where buildings from 6 to 12 stories are permitted. The current use of the area proposed for vacation is that it's a steep vegetated hillside. There is a retaining wall that supports the adjacent sidewalk and street, and this area is not used for pedestrian or vehicle traffic. Now on the right is the zoning map that shows the Town Center 1 zone adjacent to the area of vacation, which again is outlined in pink. So the development potential for this area, staff has determined that the highest and best use for this property can be achieved through redevelopment, and the street vacation would help facilitate the redevelopment of the area and the surrounding properties. And here's a Google street view looking south from 236th Street Southwest with Van Rye Boulevard on the right, and then the area of vacation and lots 16, 17, and 18. You work left across the image. There's a light pole with flower baskets, street trees, a garbage can landscaping, and traffic light pictured. So what considerations are before council tonight? The first question is, is any property denied direct access from a public right-of-way? Second question, should the city retain any easement rights? Third question is compensation for the vacation and option to exercise? And lastly, is the vacation in the public interest? So beginning with access, the lots adjacent to the area of vacation will continue to be accessible from the public right-of-way, 236th Street Southwest. Vacating this portion of 236th Street will not change the access to the property as a result of the street vacation. Now on the left is a Google street view looking east. Sorry, there's a typo there. Showing, also showing traffic cones, traffic light, crosswalk, landscaping, street trees, and sidewalks. Right, the second consideration is easements. So the city can elect to retain easements to the vacated right-of-way for purposes like construction, repair, and maintenance of public utilities and services and access. So there are two recommended easements related to this proposal. The first is for sewer utility until it's no longer needed due to utility relocation at the time of redevelopment. The second easement staff is recommending is a wall inspection and access easement, again, until that's no longer needed and provided that any redevelopment of the parcels will provide lateral support for 236th Street Southwest. Going into some more detail, high level about the sewer utility easement, it is shown here on the map, a 12-foot-wide strip of land across the vacation area and lot 16, 17, 11, and Track 2. It's the hatched area across those lots. The city has a right to access this easement for construction, maintenance, repair, or work on the sewer. And the city is responsible for restoring any grass, landscaping, trees, fencing, irrigation, et cetera, within the easement area should any work be required. The wall inspection and access easement shown here on the left with the map view, it is a 20-foot-wide strip of land within the vacation area and a little bit of Lot 18. The property owners are responsible for wall maintenance. The city, however, has the right to access and inspect the easement area. And if the property owners fail to maintain the wall, the city has the right to maintain it at the cost of the property owner. Right, so compensation. The city can require compensation for the full appraised value of the area because this area of right-of-way was acquired at public expense. The petitioner submitted an appraisal that was reviewed, sorry, the petitioner submitted an appraisal that valued the right-of-way at $440,000 or about $80 per square foot. Kenan Williams, CRE of Foster Gar VPC, reviewed the appraisal method and value and found that the report is reasonably supported by market evidence. And Kenan is with me here tonight. Staff recommends that council require compensation at full market value for the full appraisal value presented should council decide to approve the street vacation. Right, and public interest. So the street vacation followed by a lot consolidation will provide these sites greater development potential and help the city better achieve the vision of Town Center. Compensation received for the street vacation is required by state law to be used for the benefit of public open space and transportation capital projects in the city. And so, alternatives and staff recommendation. The first alternative is to approve the street vacation on the following conditions. Within 45 days, require full compensation of $440,000 per the applicant's appraisal completed by Kidder Matthews. Require an easement agreement for the sewer utility until it's no longer needed. And require an easement agreement for wall inspection and access until no longer needed and provided that any redevelopment will provide lateral support for 236th Street Southwest. Staff does recommend this alternative. The second alternative would be to modify or table the request. City council could choose to vacate only a portion of the area proposed for vacation. However, staff has not identified any public need for the area, and it is in the public's best interest to vacate the whole area proposed to support future development of the vacated area and adjacent parcels, as is envisioned in the Town Center plan. If council does need more information regarding specific questions about this proposal, the agenda item can, of course, be tabled until more information is received. However, staff does not recommend this alternative. And the third alternative is to deny the street vacation request at this time. The city has no obligation or requirement to approve a street vacation request. However, to deny a street vacation, council must identify specific objective facts, force that denial like a foreseeable need for the right-of-way in the future. However, no public need has been identified, so staff does not recommend this alternative. And now we have time for discussion and questions. Thank you.
So do we ask questions before we open the public hearing? Do we have any questions?
Sorry, I think you opened the public hearing first and then asked your questions following the closing of that.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to move to public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Okay, now, we can ask for any written questions or anything from our council members here. Does anyone have any questions or comments to add?
Mayor...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, thank you for the presentation again, and I think it's worth making a bit common statement in support of this alternative that you recommend. I've done some back-of-napkin math, and I think, you know, as sort of stewards of city property, it's worth sort of exploring, you know, what trade-offs we're getting, and certainly the cash value is, I think, the most immediate sort of thing that was curious to me. But all that, you know, your recommendation and their appraisal seems to be in the ballpark. And so I'm appreciative of the work that you've done explaining this process to us and verifying the appraisal. But I think what I'm also most excited about is the opportunity to sort of activate that space, and I'm glad that the city can sort of help make that happen. You know, it will be the property nearest to the light rail station that will have housing and hopefully commercial space there. So I'm really pleased to be in support of this. So, thank you.
Okay, I guess I neglected to read this. Were there any written testimony submitted?
There was no written testimony, and there is no one who has signed up in person. Do you want me to check online?
Okay, and was anyone online?
Anyone in the online audience who wants to participate in the public hearing portion, please use your hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. That's it.
Okay, so now we can come back to our council members. Councilmember Sanmore?
I just have a curiosity question. The photo on page 10, if you blow it up real well, it shows 237th, and it looks like 237th is going into the trees. Is there any plan to take 237th and put it into Van Rye Boulevard?
I cannot speak to those plans as part of this proposal. However, access for future development would likely be from 237th. I don't believe there are plans to connect it to Van Rye Boulevard, but it would be its own access likely for the development, but that hasn't all been sorted out, but would be part of the development review when we do review that.
So, just to understand, it could happen?
Connect to Van Rye? I suppose it's possible, but I am not aware of any plans.
It's just that, maybe it's a shadow or something, but it looks like it goes right into that road, that's all. I was just kind of curious.
Oh, I see. Yes, the road does go up that way. I think it's unlikely that it would connect to Van Rye Boulevard, but I cannot speak on whether or not it would for sure.
Thank you.
All right, are there anyone else? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
First, I just wanted, before I ask my actual question, did this confirm? This is not a quasi-judicial process, correct? I can actually vote how I want to vote? Okay, thank you for confirming that. So my question, and I'm not sure if this is fair, but I want to put it in motion from reading the city manager's report, is it fair to say that this process is the only thing that stands between Terrace Station 4 existing? I realize there'd be a lot of steps, but it seems like those are connected.
Yes.
That that's who Whiskey is, okay? So with this, and I appreciate this picture being up, across the street, we know that that temporary parking lot is about to become, I don't remember, 400, 500 units, something like that? So I'm going to say that's eight stories. I don't know, I'm not a mathematician or builder, but let's just presume eight stories. Terrace Station 4, I imagine, would be modeled after 1, 2, and 3 down the hill, and I will just say never envisioned it being up the hill. Theoretically speaking, would be partnered, if you will, with whatever the name of the one across the street is, which, again, I apologize, I know you put in a lot of work and time and then I'll learn your names, but right now it's a parking lot and trees. My point being, I was worried about losing my view with light rail, and that didn't happen. Now I'm thinking to myself, did we just create a tunnel as we enter and exit our city? And this decision is that, keep it simple. And this decision is that, keep it simple, the only thing that's not going to create a tunnel. So just kind of putting that out there, question-wise. And I don't know that there is a question, it's an observation. And am I alone here? Like, is no one else noticing that, that literally we're saying there'll be a 12-story building, eight-story building on the north side of 236th, and Terrorist Station Four's imagining, going to be like one, two, or three down the hill, so whatever that actually is, now envision that there. And I see a lot of trees not being there if that were to happen. Please go back to that other slide, I don't need this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't want us to go into the grid because that's, as I'm talking about trees, you don't see it on that other one. I'm just saying, what you're looking at right there, theoretically speaking, becomes nothing but concrete. So just putting that out there, I'm not suggesting that we cannot have that happen, but I just will say, as a council member, at no point did I envision that that was possibility number one out of the box. So it's funny to think that this little strip of right-of-way is the only thing that's keeping that view right now. So, maybe it was just a commentary, not a question. In fact, yes, I reviewed it, it was just a commentary. Thank you.
Laura, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say it's a very good call on your part, because for downtown, we looked at that, and this is a little off, but I'll just do it really fast. And that's why we had wedding cakes, and we used to look at different buildings, and maybe at a different time, we can look at what zone there and if it goes straight up or it has to be set back, but it will create a lot of shadowing in that area, and you're absolutely correct.
Okay, anyone else? So can we just go on? So, do you want to move, councilmember, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there are no further questions or observations, then I will move to close the public hearing.
Did I hear a second? So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. And, okay, I guess we now move on to Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the ordinance to approve the request to vacate 236th Street Southwest right-of-way with conditions number, oh, sorry, PSV 22-0001 as described in and conditioned in the ordinance.
All right, it's been moved and seconded? All in favor? Or do we have a discussion on this one? No?
Always, yeah. Has for discussion.
Is there a discussion on this one? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, and I just need to point a clarification. To vote no, I would have to have my own reasons for why I think we shouldn't. I want to go back to the, you had an observation three, or excuse me, option three was you had to have, like, proof of why you can't sell it. That's why I was asking if it was quasi-judicial, because it's kind of like, you just told me that there's no reason not to sell it, but that kind of plays my hand, so I just kind of want to make sure. That's not, is it on now? Okay. And it was looking red, so it was, red means off to me, so, no, it's, at this point, it's a policy decision, it's a legislative decision, you could say, you know, I think that we need it. Or, I don't like the price, or whatever else it is, you can say no. That's why you have those alternatives and recommendations. Okay. But at this point, the staff is looking at it and saying, do you really need it? Do you really, is there any use for it? You go through that analysis, and if you don't have that, then it makes sense to vacate it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I figured I'd share since, before we vote, since we're chatting, and I didn't weigh in before. Appreciate you walking us through the process so clearly and making sure that we did have an understanding of different options. I really appreciated how you laid that out, so thank you for that. I personally am excited about the idea of both taking a piece of land that, for me at least, doesn't feel super conducive to public use, and getting a financial, recouping finances around that, that we then get to invest in a way that hopefully we can find better ways, or at least ways that are more accessible for our community to make use of those funds. So I'm excited about that piece, I think it seems like a good step forward. And I'm also excited about the activation of that piece of land. I think that's one of the things we've been working towards for a long time, is we, light rail is opening, and there's going to be, hopefully, you know, new opportunities for community members to join us, for businesses to join us. And so for me, this seems like a positive step, both in allowing better use of that land, as well as, you know, taking some finances out of the equation that we then get to figure out how to support our community in a way that's more accessible. So thank you.
All right, oh. Can I just, councilmember Salmore?
Steve, I hope I didn't step on what you're trying to get at, because it dawned on me that you were thinking maybe if you could vote no against that, you would be able to open up that space and make it lighter in there, so it doesn't create, like you said, that tunnel effect. Is that, and then you asked Kenan if that's a possibility for voting no, and what I heard it's legislative, and so I just wanted to make sure you didn't think I was trying to postpone what you were saying, but to have some conversation on your observation that is very well point taken.
And I appreciate that. You know, I guess if I can do a follow-up question, you know, when I came on council, we were just voting to rezone all of downtown, and this is part of that, so that's a six to 12. But that's where we go with the, are the design standards that we've already adopted, I thought we had the setbacks, so maybe my concern isn't necessarily there? I don't know, just, we already have the design standards, or do we need to revisit design standards? And I guess where I'm going is we vacate, and someone puts it in, everything gets grandfathered, so even if we then correct it, they get to use the current ones we have. And I'm saying, I came on too new to really know all of that language, and now, five years later, it's starting to manifest, you're like, whoa, wait a minute, did we do that right? Because, again, I'm going to tell you, I love coming over that crest and seeing it, and I think it's ironic, I was worried about a horizontal, and it's going to be the verticals that get us. And again, it's just that the idea of, do we have the setbacks? I feel like I remember us talking about having setbacks if you go up, but if we do not, then I hesitate to say, let's do this until we've corrected that, even though I get it, timing is everything, so. I guess if I don't have a discussion, I'm not sure what the heck I'm trying to do here.
If I can respond to the commentary about the zoning and the height, and, well, one thing I want to call out is that the adjacent parcels are still zoned Town Center One regardless of the decision, and allow buildings from six to 12 stories. So this would be additional land that would be zoned that way, but, I mean, across the street from the Candela Development, it is still permitted to be six to 12 stories. And the consideration before us tonight is for the street vacation, so we aren't necessarily considering, I mean, it's connected to the development, but we can't make, we're not considering changes to the zoning code or anything like that regarding setbacks or development heights, any, anything like that. We're talking about, yeah, vacating this property, a portion of the right-of-way. Yeah, I don't know if that provides further clarity, the zoning.
This would be, not talking about zoning, but talking about the concern of having so much on that corner, and this would be the only piece that would allow light in there and make for maybe better visibility, because we know it would be too dark. Are we off and we can't vote for something like that if we would have to vote? So I'm trying to, I think what Steve's saying is something that we need to explore and understand a little bit better. So let's say I vote, I want to vote no, because I think that area would be too dark, since there's only one light there, and there would be some concern for some maybe traffic accident or maybe expanding that road. Can I talk about that, or is that something that I can't take into consideration?
So this is legislative at this point, this is not a quasi-judicial hearing or anything like that, not zoning or whatever else. If you just say, you know what, I'm just morally opposed to street vacation, you're okay with that. This allows the framework for doing so, when you're looking at street vacations and whatever else, but at the same time, you do need that justification for, you know, whatever your decision is, is because it's, theoretically, these things are owned through an easement. Most roads are owned an easement or whatever else in there, and if you don't have any necessity, then you don't need to do it. The statutory framework provides this ability for you to point at these things, and there's enough things for it to point at, is that, well, we don't want to, we don't want to use that, we don't agree with the dollars, we don't agree with this, we don't agree with that, and you're in a different position at that point. But, you know, I guess the, I don't want you to conflate zoning considerations with this consideration. And that's kind of what I'm hearing, is that you have zoning concerns, and you don't want to blend these two concepts, because you're going to get into another, like you then, then you start getting into, you know, planning rules and things like that, and you're going to get run in a foul of those types of considerations.
Okay. All right, so are we going to call for a question?
Call for the question.
All right, so we're done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being so patient out there. So next on our agenda is the presentation of the 2023 Third Quarter Police Report with our chief, Pete Kahl, and Commander Scott King. And we have a third.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council. For the record, Pete Kahl, police chief. Next to me, I have Commander Scott King, and next to him, I have Commander Mike Haynes. While he's getting the presentation ready, I'll give you a little background. The Third Quarter Police Report will review agency goals, it tracks progress toward reaching those goals. This little report contains staffing updates, some crime statistics, and demographic analysis of enforcement action taken. The city and the region has continued to experience a dramatic increase in vehicle theft, along with a significant increase in some property crimes, particularly burglary and theft. Fortunately, the city has not seen similar increases in violent crime during this period. The report contains data from the UAS, which is short for the Unmanned Aircraft System/Drone deployments, along with training, records, code enforcement, and some community outreach statistics. Finally, the report will feature a case study outlining police response and investigation of a stabbing assault incident, which occurred during the annual Tour de Terrorists festival. So on to the presentation. Obviously, that's a picture of a brand-new building. A second slide I keep before you is for context, is our mission statement. I won't read it for you, it's there for all to read. Our goal's philosophy is based upon the six pillars identified by President Obama in 2015. Briefly, building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and finally, officer wellness and safety. Some of our goals remain the same throughout the year, but I will go over some of them with you. Provide a safe environment in the community for everyone. We try to utilize department resources effectively. We've continued to develop and expand our unmanned aerial system, which there'll be some videos from the drone in this presentation. It's an effort to leverage technology for the purpose of increasing safety for the officers. Program utilizes unmanned aerial vehicles, provide time, distance, and shielding. Three tactics that were referenced in recent legislation, updates, policy, and procedures. We've been focusing on community-oriented policing and outreach. We continue to utilize the embedded social worker program, there'll be some photos of that later on. Continue to provide and promote outreach programs such as cops and clergy. We had a meeting with those folks just two weeks ago. Utilize the e-bike program to make community contacts, particularly when the weather's nice around here in the summer. We work collaboratively with regional law enforcement agencies. We participate in the Regional Intelligence Group, which is a group of detectives throughout the region that share intelligence. I have a detective embedded in the United States Marshals Violent Offender Task Force. Incorporate education, long-term solution strategies with enforcement, and utilize code enforcement and control to maintain a clean and inviting environment. We've been trying to recruit and retain personnel. I make no mystery about the fact that I have four vacancies. I made four conditional offers. It's a continual struggle to keep people here that aren't retiring and find good candidates before somebody else finds them. It's a very competitive environment right now for a lot of reasons. I like to provide opportunity and new challenges for personnel, focus on succession planning, develop the needs for the next generation of department leaders. We're all not going to be here forever. Maintain auditing systems to ensure policy compliance. We'll talk a bit about these high-tech systems later on in the presentation. And my focus is on finding candidates of differing backgrounds in diverse communities, part of the challenge. We want to be regional levers and set examples for modern policing as it relates to community expectations. We try to listen to community feedback, implement changes appropriate, update and modify policies and procedures promptly, develop and promptly instruct internal training programs consistent with legislative mandates. We want to focus on fostering a culture of partnership with the community, be transparent as possible. Recognize community support and trust as paramount to our success. We want to be proactive in incorporating improvements and efficiencies in lieu of the wait-and-see approach, and of course, we want to maintain fiscal responsibility. I'll pass the torch to my commander to my right now.
All right, so staffing update. So William Wigan, he has finished his field training, and he's at solo status on graveyard patrol. Scott Colville, he's our newest hire, and so he's a police recruit, and he starts the police academy on November 14th, and he's set to graduate on March 26th. Marlena Moran, she's the newest member of our record staff, and she's working towards being a certified public records officer. And Officer Luther Russell has also finished his field training and is at solo status on graveyard patrol.
Good evening, I'm Commander Haynes, and I'm going to give you a brief overview of the third quarter numbers for patrol. Calls for service are up about 7% compared to last year. Outreach continues to be a focus for patrol, with officers making 646 contacts with community members. Case reports, traffic stops, infractions, and citations saw small increases consistent with the increase in overall calls for service during the third quarter. Arrests, domestic violence-related offenses, driving under the influence, vehicle prowls and burglaries all saw similar increases. The large increase in vehicle thefts can be attributed to three factors. Vehicle thefts are spiking in Washington. Washington ranks second in the nation for vehicle thefts per capita. This is likely due in part to our no pursuit legislation. Secondly, social media trends such as the Kia and Hyundai Theft Challenge. Both these manufacturers have vulnerabilities with their theft deterrent systems, which was widely circulated on social media platforms. Of the 70 vehicles that were stolen during the third quarter, half of them were produced by these two manufacturers. Officers apprehended, juveniles for vehicle theft on several occasions. However, they are routinely not allowed to book them into detention. On rare occasions when they are booked, it is usually for a brief stay, and then they're released to go right back to what they were doing before. Violent crimes, I'm happy to report that Mountain Terrace continues to be a very safe community. We had six reported violent crimes during the third quarter. Patrol responded to two deaths attributed to an accidental overdose of narcotics. Patrol responded to two deaths attributed to an accidental overdose of narcotics. Officers administered naloxone, a prescription medicine designed to counteract the effects of opioids, three times, resulting in the prevention of additional loss of life. We continue to see a tremendous amount of counterfeit fentanyl in our community, with officers seizing pills by the hundreds. Here is a recent video captured by our new body-worn camera system that was implemented in September. In this incident, patrol responded to a drug overdose and found the individual clinging to life in a parking lot. If you listen closely, you can hear agonal breathing, which is the body fighting to stay alive. The officer administers naloxone and uses a sternal rub, which is intended to stimulate the patient using discomfort to encourage him, and encourage him, to fight through the effect of the narcotic, which is shutting down his central nervous system and respiratory functions.
Let's see, let's see. Can I move back here? You take any drugs or anything?
Yeah.
Uh...
I don't know how.
Yep. Any, any drugs?
I see.
Fat? No?
I do.
Hey, boy.
Hey, hey.
When you hold this light?
I got it.
Are you smoking any fentanyl or anything, or what kind of, I mean, I don't care, but you don't know? Do you drink? Again? Hey. Wake up, there you go, there you go, there you go.
So without the immediate intervention there in the naloxone that was administered by Officer Voler, it's highly likely that that individual would not have survived. And that's the tragedy of drugs in our community. This slide represents the community demographics. Infractions and arrests during the quarter are within the range of our demographics. Next slide. We continue to operate a robust drone program, recognizing the high value it has in regards to increased safety for officers and the community. This is a list of missions during the third quarter. Missing child, National Night Out, which was a community outreach opportunity, a domestic violence assault suspect, assisted Edmonds with a bomb call, a missing person, a shooting suspect, and a armed domestic violence suspect. Program continues to be utilized by Regional SWAT, deploying the drones in a manner to accentuate safety in some of the most dangerous situations that officers encounter. And lastly, here's a video of officers using a drone to clear a located stolen vehicle before they approached it. This is a perfect example of how the drone can heighten safety and allow for officers Good enough. So as you can see with the video here, being able to have a drone and send it up there, they were able to clear the vehicle. In this case, there was nobody in the vehicle. However, prior to the drone program, they would have had to go up there and obviously increase the risk of a confrontation or something bad happening. So they're able to stay back behind, cover behind their patrol vehicles, let the drone do the work for them, and then obviously, once they know it's safe, then they can go up and recover the vehicle and return it to the owner. With that, I'll turn it over to Commander King.
All right, so training. So the entire department completed body-worn camera use training. Our record staff received Public Records Act training, and another member attended training to become a certified public records officer. We had officers receive certifications in peer support and in patrol tactics instructor. So we recently renovated one of our offices into a soft interview room. The space was intended to provide a more calming environment for victims of crime when interacting with the police or engaging with our investigative unit. The guideline, principles of the model remodel was outlined by Project Beloved, a nonprofit organization. In 2017, the president and founder found herself in the middle of a traumatic police investigation when her daughter Molly was the victim of a homicide. As Matheson met with detectives, she noticed how stark and uncomfiting the meeting space was. As she worked through her grief, she was determined that she could use her daughter's death as an agent for change, and began reaching out to local police departments to talk to them about redesigning their victim folk to spaces. The same approach guided the Mountain Terrace Police Department's choice about furniture, lighting, accessories, and paint color. The beloved provided all of the wall art that you see, which is featured in the space And evidence technician Custer, she processed 1,597 pieces of evidence, and she did spend a substantive amount of time setting up our evidence.com that has to do with our body cameras. So that was a real good thing that was done, it took quite a bit of time. As animal control, she responded to 19 animal control calls and conducted 30 park checks, resulting in two civil tickets and one correction notice. So records, due to staffing changes, we had to train some of our new record staff on public records requests and to work on certifying one of our new record specialists as a public records officer. Public records requests can be generated in several ways, the primary being through our city's website. Record staff processed approximately 480 case reports and accepted 128 new records Code enforcement continues to increase its collaboration with CED as we integrate our responsibilities across all code enforcement domains. The enforcement process remains focused on the city's vision to create feeling of safety and welcoming throughout the community by abating code violations and nuisance condition. This is done by education, voluntary compliance agreement, written notice of violation and abatement. And you could see, I'll just point out, we had 144 parking complaints, which resulted in voluntary compliance with a written warning, except for cases that were escalated. Escalation resulted in 28 parking tickets and one impound. And code enforcement will be doing a presentation for council on January 18th on their process. Our staff continues to stay active in the community. You know, you could see on the upper left, Officer Friesland in Canine Harley at a St. Pius event. On the bottom left, you could see Officer Voler helping a community member with her car. In the middle, one of our city residents, Doug, had his wagon stolen, and we know how much his wagon meant to him, and the officers collaborated with Ace Hardware to get him a new wagon. And on the bottom right, you could see Chief Caw with members of the DEIC in front of our new welcome sign. Our embedded social worker program is an extension of a grant partnership with Linwood PD and Vertant Health Commission. Our embedded social worker, Heather Turner, works within assigned patrol offices on a weekly basis to engage with community members. While not all community members accept our services, we are still focused on building relationships which support long-term success. All right, so this is a case study from Turdite Terrace. Officers were dispatched around midnight to Turdite Terrace Carnival area. Multiple reports came out about a subject being stabbed, and they were still at the Patrol responded along with four additional officers who were assigned to the Turdite Terrace event. The additional Carnival staffing has been critical for quick police responses during these events. A detective was also working during the detail and responded. Police were flagged down by the stabbing victim inside the carnival. He advised that he'd been stabbed, and officers quickly applied a tourniquet to his arm. The victim told police a description of the suspect and his first name. A witness was contacted by the detective, and the witness pointed toward a subject in the carnival identifying him as the suspect. He matched the description given by other witnesses and the victim. As officers attempted to approach the suspect, he immediately fled eastbound on the field. Officers initiated a pursuit in the 400 block of 224th Street Southwest. The suspect tripped and was taken into custody without further incident. A search of the suspect incident to arrest revealed him to be in possession of a bloody folding knife and a replica firearm. The suspect was booked at Denny Youth Juvenile Justice Center for the assault. Meanwhile, as officers were arresting the suspect, a witness recontacted the detective and advised him that a subject had approached him, threatening to shoot him if he cooperated with police. Officers viewed a video of the suspect threatening the witness and immediately identified him as a juvenile from a recent contact. He had also been seen fleeing the area as a stabbing suspect was taken into custody Witnesses requested escorts to their vehicles as they felt their lives were in danger for having helped police identify the suspect. As officers escorted the witnesses to their vehicles, the second suspect was spotted walking toward them on the sidewalk. Officers arrested him for felony harassment, and he was booked into Denny Youth Juvenile Justice Center. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I have a few, and maybe somebody else wants to talk about code enforcement, but so, one of my big things, and I'm hoping that we will take it up with our legislators and bring it to Olympia, but is the juvenile issues. And I don't want to give anybody a false sense of security. I know we have a safer feeling city, but change is coming. We do have all the apartments being built down in Linwood off of 44th, and I see on our police reports a lot of time that 212th is, it seems like there's always something going on. Somebody told me, what is today, yesterday, that the Chevron got robbed there. I don't know if it did or not, but there's always seems to be something going on in all that traffic that's going to come up through Mountain Lake Terrace. We've talked about it before, I don't know how we're going to prepare for it, but it will bring a big change into our streets. My quiet little neighborhood, all of a sudden I had a police officer knocking on the door because a stolen car came through and hit two of my neighbor's car, and somebody was following them, picked them up, and I guess took off. And, and we're seeing a little bit more. I heard a lot of sirens on Halloween, which was kind of interesting to me, but what, as a group for Mountain Lake Terrace, are we looking at for the juvenile? I was trying to look at my notes here, but there, there was a juvenile Miranda bill a few years ago for illegal activity, not as possible, so much damage, but ruining their... I was listening to a talk on juvenile, and not that I blame all juveniles for issues, there's a lot of good ones out there, but there's a lot of bad ones going in the wrong direction because of what we just saw with the knife. And I'm assuming that that juvenile went to Denny Hall, but not a lot happened? Or what happened to that juvenile after he had a gun and a knife?
Well, obviously, that's a matter for the courts, they're going to, there's going to be a trial, the assault to conviction. I think, in reference to your statement, the breakdown of the juvenile system is twofold. Number one, in most cases, we're not allowed to book juveniles unless there's a violent offense such as the one reflects there. Several weeks ago, there was some juveniles driving a stolen car around, and when we decided to book them, we caught them, and went to book them at Denny, and we refused booking. I mean, this is, this is a recent development, and it's not just Snoke County, it's all the counties. Very reluctant to incarcerate juveniles for a variety of reasons. There's also some legislation about questioning juveniles. A good example would be that if I arrest an adult, and I read him his rights, and he chooses to talk to me, without a lawyer, he can do that. In the case of a juvenile, that's not an option. We read them rights and have to provide them with an attorney before we can talk to them post-arrest. I mean, that seems like a simple solution, but it creates a myriad of problems in terms of questioning suspects. So there's been a very liberal movement in terms of dealing with juveniles differently than adults, although my, my perception as a law enforcement professional is the crime is the same, the only difference is the age of the offender. So we need to take another hard look at, at a more realistic approach to that. That's the best answer I can have. I echo your concerns on those, on those bases.
And if I remember right, not in Linwood, but we had a 14-year-old in a stolen car that hit a 68-year-old and fractured their, their pelvis and was at Harborview. It just horrifies me at 14. I was remembering when I was 14, and there was no way I would even drive a car. So it's just, that's why I keep on telling, don't have a false sense of security, you know, always have your swivel head, always know what's going on, because it only takes one person to do a crime against somebody, and, you know, that goes up 100% for that person of feeling violated. And so with that being said, I know you said we're down for officers. What's going on with the police academy and the waitlist?
Well, it is a long waitlist. Scott Colville was with us, he's going to the academy in November, he was with us for a total of three months waiting. We've addressed the problem in a variety of ways. Regional academies are one thing, there's going to be one open in Skagit County soon, there's one in Tri-Cities, there's one in Spokane, there's one in Vancouver. But right now, that's a solution to the problem that lies in the future. It's not uncommon for us to hire folks after the background checks and then find something for them to do for six months before we can send them to the academy, and we all know the academy is six months long. The field training I experienced after that may be as long as three months, so if I do them ask correctly, that's over a year before they're really a producing police officer, and even then, they're still brand new. So it's a, it's a terrific problem, and couple that with the amount of excess of police officers in the last two years due to retirements or just relocating their careers, it's a perfect storm, it really is.
And I just have a curiosity question, and I'm asking the questions because I know you guys know the answers, so I appreciate that. And it's a curiosity question because I don't know, how are the new cameras going? I know you showed... I know you showed us that one video. Is it something to get used to? I hear a lot of victim or a lot of criminals, if, when they see what they do on camera, because they always are denying what they do, they're very surprised. Is it holding up more in court if you have that camera footage? Is it, do you see it being a big benefit to you?
We haven't gone to trial in too many cases yet, but it's really hard to dispute what's on video from both perspectives. It's hard to dispute what the citizens film with us sometimes in terms of behavior, and it's very difficult to dispute what the criminal is doing on camera. So, it's a positive. As far as getting used to it, I think a lot of the officers that have been around while had a lot of concern about how easy it would be to work and manipulate and record, but the system is really bulletproof. We really chose the right vendor. The Axon system is, they know what they're doing, and they're instantly on the end of the phone to help us. I've been very impressed with the quality of things that's come through.
And my last, sorry.
Mind if I text something?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Along those lines, Chief, I had the sort of misfortune, or there was a misfortunate car accident that happened right in front of me earlier this week. I think you've heard about it by now, but you know, I was impressed by how quick the responding officer came, but you know, he took a sort of my statement, you know, from being a nearby bystander with his camera. Does the camera system create any efficiencies for folks writing up reports or efficiency along those lines?
Yeah, it helps your memory. Obviously, if you have some questions, you can always review the footage and make sure that you are accurate in what you're putting down. So, there's just no downside of the whole system. It's been a boon, and it continues to be a great asset.
Oh, no, I mean, that's perfect timing. And this might be a little bit moot, because now the mayor, I knew what you were asking the city manager to do. You probably maybe already have done these, but we got some letters from some citizens, and I just wanted to follow up. This one was from August 11th, requesting reducing speed limits and increasing parking enforcement. And it comes from the driving school over here in Ballenger, and they were talking about reducing speeds to 25 miles an hour. I thought it was interesting because it's from a driving school. And then they said there, with the Evergreen Fields, they have a huge increase in pedestrian on 56 that has become a major safety concern with folks trying to navigate opening their vehicle doors. And then item number B here, he said with increased traffic traveling 244th and 59th, relocating and merging onto Rite, oh, by Rite Aid. Yeah, that's a mess. That's always been, sorry. I know exactly what he's talking about there. And then enforce our parking codes and restrict parking on two hours in any affected business area, and then due to increase of high-rise apartments and condos with not enough sufficient parking, giving more parking tickets, and then adding some stop signs. Have you guys seen this one?
That would certainly be something to ship to the city traffic engineer to look at.
And then there was just one other, and this one comes from July, but it was talking, and it's funny that we're talking about it in November because we always talk about it in July, but this person has lived in Mountain Lake Terrace since 1966, and they were talking about, please have police patrol cars scan our area from 9:00 PM on the 4th of July till 1:00 AM on the 5th of July. And they said, just because of the noise, but we hear that every year. What can we tell citizens when we hear fireworks going off? Don't you have to, police officer, don't you have to see them lighting them off?
Well, obviously, we're inundated with calls. I mean, quite frankly, on the 4th of July, it's like trying to take water out of the ocean with a spoon, but we'll be glad to come out and talk to those folks. But yes, if we're going to take enforcement action, we would have to see the offense. You're correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, team, both for being here and presenting tonight, as well as all of the work that you do and the rest of the team does. I always appreciate hearing updates on what's going on. And I guess I want to just confirm my understanding, because I do, I think it's important to say, so our violent crime rate has stayed consistent. Okay. And I think that's important. I think property crime is real, and it often has really negative impacts, and I think it does oftentimes impact how people feel about safety, but from a violent crime perspective, we live in a very safe community, and I think we should be, I am grateful for that, and I know you guys play an important role in that. And I think our residents, by and large, echo that in conversation. So, I just, I want to say thank you for that and all of the work that goes into that. I think a big part of that is all of the work that you do around community policing and working to find ways to make connection within our community. I love the interview room that you showed. I just, I would have never crossed my mind, and what an impactful difference I have to imagine that makes for people who are navigating really hard situations and are there for reasons outside of their control. So, thank you for continuing to look for ways to support our community, to build relationships. I really do think that preventative work, I mean, is that, I appreciate that we have so much focus there, because ideally, that hopefully keeps us from getting to a place where we have to deal with the repercussions of folks making more choices. I guess, I took notes, I took too many notes as you were talking, because there was lots. I guess one thing I wanted to ask, because I think to build on, you know, kind of your, you know, our goals around hiring and bringing folks in, and I think one of the things I always share with, you know, people from other communities is how much I value our police department. And I think, you know, you are a really good example of, you know, how to build community and the difference that that makes. I guess I would love to hear what each of you like about being a police officer, maybe just something that you enjoy. I think oftentimes, we hear about the hard parts of the role, and I don't want to discount the hard parts of that, but I think when we think about planting the seeds for folks, particularly young folks who might want to serve their community someday, I guess I would love to hear maybe, you know, what's something you enjoy about law enforcement.
I'll let these two guys answer that question, I think.
Oh, come on, all three of you.
I think for me, you know, going into this career, obviously, it sounded exciting, you know, and likely a very rewarding career, which obviously piqued my interest. But I think over the years, it's become more about just really community, and I can't think of a better feeling that I've had in my life than, you know, coming across somebody that's really down and out and has had a rough go, maybe has been in and out of jail and had problems with addiction and stuff like that, and being able to be a positive intervention in their life. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to come across those situations and really redirect a person's path or the path that they were on, and then have them come back later on and let me know how much of a difference I made for them. And I don't know, I just don't know that it gets much better than that. Beyond that, I think, you know, for me on a personal level, there's a lot of camaraderie with the guys that I work with, the family that I work with. I just, I really enjoy the people that I'm surrounded by on a daily basis, and you know, it's fantastic when everybody has the same goals, and we all work together as a team, and the things that we're able to accomplish in doing that. So, yeah, I just, I genuinely enjoy coming to work on a daily basis. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Commander King.
I echo what, oops. I echo what Commander Haynes said. You know, when I first started, it was exciting, right, to come out and think about stopping crime and catching bad guys and helping people. Those were things that were really exciting to me. And once I got started, just being out in the community and getting to know people and helping people out and seeing the difference you made really is what hit me the biggest at what I do and what's kept me around so long. Also, the people that I work with. At this point in my career, I really enjoy supporting the officers and helping them in that endeavor. You know, I started Cops in Clergy, and just getting out in the community and doing things like that just fills my heart, makes me warm to just see people come together for good and doing good things. Yeah, I just, just really happy to be working here in the group of people we have. It's like a big family at the police department, and everyone works well together, and it's just a great environment to be in, and we're all supportive of each other.
Well, as you might guess, I've been here long enough that I hired both these guys, did one of their backgrounds, and they were both on my crew as a sergeant, back when I was actually practicing the craft, which is the best job you could ever have, being a patrol sergeant on any shift is a great job. Why we promote past that is a mystery to all of us, but we do. And watching people develop from being a wide-eyed rookie that doesn't know what to do to now sitting next to me being commanders is pretty worthwhile. I'm proud of that.
I love it. Thank you each for sharing. I love hearing that, and sounds like, you know, for lots of folks who are looking to make a difference, you know, there's good opportunity there. So, thank you for that. And I think with that, I will leave all my notes alone and just say thank you again and good to see you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin by saying welcome back. We missed you last time, so it's great to have you back at the, whatever that's considered the table. We're the dice, the table. Great to have the three of you, always. I actually want to do a visual on my thank you. So, if you would go back while I'm talking to the slide of the new people, and let me just say once again how important your leadership is collectively speaking. You set the culture, you set the standard. People rise up or sway to the wrong direction based upon your lead. And I will say, if we ever needed evidence of how amazing your leadership is, I'm going to make a conjecture, and nonetheless, say you have done something that we were told is virtually impossible. You have, Lord, and I mean this in the most sincerest way as one myself, hashtag black unicorn. Congratulations to this city. That is absolutely outstanding. And I would say that that gentleman probably had his pick of where to go, and he probably had his insights into the department in ways that others don't to make sure that it's a power, they probably division-one athletes, imagining coming through your police department the same way, right, where you're just like, we're going to make sure this person really sees it. Not that we wouldn't do that for everyone, but we do a little bit extra sometimes. And just want to say, what an amazing group of individuals just to be looking at in general, but how, as one myself, important it is to see my culture reflected in what I think is one of the most outstanding police departments I've ever had the honor of interacting with, and sadly, I've interacted with a lot, and I mean it the exact way I said that, but every time I've interacted with you all, it's always been something that I have been proud to report back on. And that includes when it's been my family that has been engaged with you all. And so, again, that was when we were the department that we were, and this is now, as I see more women in the department, I see more folks of color. But again, just, we cannot not pause and just say thank you. And again, I say that's the leadership. And I hope, you know, that his experience along with everyone else's will just see that leadership growing as you continue to cycle through your own processes of making sure your succession planning is what it is. But, you know, I recognize the department will continue to change, but I hope it continues in this direction. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your leadership, and thank you for your entire team, for the day in and day out, that you genuinely put your lives on the line, and as you showed us in that, I always feel like you should do trigger warning, trigger warning, but maybe it's the wrong group to say that term with, with the gentlemen who have been there when somebody is genuinely passing away. And if that Narcan wasn't there, they did not have a chance. Even with the Narcan there, you've only increased it by about that much. So, again, just that that's a new role that you're all having to do. Again, I applaud you all, because I imagine it isn't as much of chasing bad guys as it used to be. Now, it's really trying to make sure the community is healthy, and you all having to play a significant part in that. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else before we move on? Okay. Oh, you're done. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I might suggest, before we start on the next topic, taking a five-minute break, I think it'll be quite a while, and also, when we come back, need to make a motion to carry the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Oh. We never go that late. All right, we're back from recess, and next on our agenda is the review of the salary and benefits survey and a six-year financial projection with our deputy city manager Carolyn Hope and finance director Janelle Lewis.
And thank you, Mayor. Sorry, if we could just have a quick motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock to, let's say, 11, no later than 11. Sorry.
Okay, Mayor Pretend?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to extend the meeting until no later than 11:00 PM tonight.
Second.
So, it's moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, do we have a?
Should have said 10:25.
Okay, so, we cannot go beyond 11. All right.
I don't know.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be here with you tonight. Tonight, we're here to answer any outstanding questions that you've had about the salary and benefits survey to date, to review the financial impacts and discuss implementation We've been to you three times this year, and also, last year, there was a salary survey, and council appropriated some funds to do a salary survey. This year, we identified some flaws with the outsourced salary survey and came to you with an approach on how to reevaluate the salary survey, and did that in August, came back with some comparable salaries in September, and came back again in October with some updates to that data. We'll go through tonight a little bit of background, just as refresher for you and the community. We'll talk about the financial projections and the impacts and some options to move forward and recommendations. And I did just want to say, I didn't plan to go through some of the updates I provided you in your memo related to the benefits. So, there was a couple of pages worth of recap from our last meeting about benefits and questions the council had related to sick and vacation leave, and I just wanted to open it up for questions, if there were any questions about that portion of the memo before we move forward. Okay. Well, if you think of anything later, we can always address it as we move forward. So, just a quick little recap on where we've been. We're doing a salary and benefits survey, and this is to look at adjustments to salaries based on the market conditions. These are conditions outside of inflation, and they do a really comprehensive job of looking at job descriptions and the experience and education required, as well as compensation and benefits. This is a way for councils to look at the market, to provide accountability for salaries that are paid, and to optimize our ability to recruit and retain employees. Also, we looked at in the past our retention statistics, and this was a graph that showed how many people have left the city over the years, and you can see in the last couple of years, we've had quite an uptick with 32 people leaving the city last year, and this year, we have about 18 who've left already. And also, the city manager recently conducted a survey of staff where we learned that 92% of folks said that they would leave if they had an opportunity to make more money. So, that was an important statistics that we learned about. In the past, we also looked at the time to fill positions. There are some statistics out there from HR recruiting firms that on average, across the country in 2022 anyway, it took about 77 days to fill positions. You can see here are some of the challenges we've had in recruiting positions in Mountain Lake Terrace, and there's several here that are still ongoing. And then, as a result of the salary survey, we have a graph here that shows salaries compared to market, and what this graph shows us is that about 88% of our positions are more than 5% from the market average, and our goal is to be within 5%. So, we are in a challenge. So we are in a challenging position. And then another thing that we looked at was when there are more job openings than workers, then the wages increase. And this is where our current market condition is. We're in a very competitive market. Nationwide, there is a shortage of workers, but also in particular in the Seattle metropolitan area, we are in a very competitive market. So it makes competition and wages much higher. And another thing that we looked at was how our nonrepresented employees, who is, I should have started with, this is what the salary and benefit survey was about, is our nonrepresented staff. They have had a lower COLA, which is the only type of compensation increase provided outside of their performance reviews. They've had a lower COLA than inflation and than our represented employees. And just a refresher, the nonrepresented staff have 7.75% less COLA over this time period than our police guild and 4.25% less than the Teamsters in this time period. I'm going to hand it over to Janela to talk about financial projections.
Good evening, everyone. Janela, Finance Director. As you all may remember, we annexed into the fire district earlier this year. And per that ordinance and a ballot measure, we removed the following revenues in line with the projected reduced expenditures. So the EMS levy is now going to be levied by the RFA, and then the fire water tax is no longer going to be needed to pay for a fire. And we promised the voters that we would reduce the general levy by $1,694,000 and $166. The updated projections, this added clarity to the general fund and recreation fund revenues and expenditures table to show the transfer. The levy rate in 2016, there was a levy lid lift of 25 cents, and that was to fund operations for maintenance and capital in the recreation fund. These are allocated to operations in this projection. This year showed increased activity in recreation and revenues improving each year and approaching 2019 levels by 2028. The forecasts were updated based on the new trends. Both the Teamsters and Police Guild contracts are due to be renegotiated next year with implementation in 2025, and staff accounted for an increase in these contracts. However, they are placeholders that require further research and negotiation. These increases are accounted for to better understand the long-term impacts on the budget. The changes to the fiscal forecast for the water and sewer utilities. For water, we removed the rate raise from the 2024 forecast. We adjusted debt servicing for the public works loan to reflect 23 and projected 24 expenditures. We adjusted CIP expenditures down to account for the $20 million in bond proceeds that were forecast to be sold in 2022, but they were not. And we added water comprehensive plan to the 2024 CIP budget. For the sewer, we adjusted the CIP expenditures down to account for the $25 million in bond proceeds that were forecast, that were forecast to be sold in 2022, but did not happen. We added a sewer comprehensive plan to the 2024 CIP budget, moved the CIP list of minor projects into the aging infrastructure replacement program line item for clarity, and increased the CIP funding in the Edmonds wastewater treatment plant line item to prepare for upcoming capital costs associated with DOE permitting changes. The budget is balanced with a healthy ending fund balance through 2028. The fund can absorb the salary adjustments in water, sewer, and storm. The street construction fund, we adjusted grants and funding sources to current estimates. We adjusted the CIP to account for project cost escalations such as 66th Avenue rebuild, 216th and 48th Street projects, and Main Street Phase III. This budget is balanced, and the fund can absorb salary adjustments. And now, back to Carolyn.
Thank you. So, and this table shows the projected changes for the nonrepresented staff if we meet the market conditions, and that would be according to the salary schedule provided in Attachment A of your memo. This salary schedule includes 3.5% increments over a seven-step schedule, and it includes a projected 3% COLA each year, which is in our current projections. These additions do lead to a significant increase in 2024, assuming that we implemented it then, of about $1.9 million in salaries and benefits, and then approximately $400 to $600,000 per year thereafter. The other cost implications relate to benefits. We talked about adjusting the vacation accrual for people who've served 21 years to add one hour a month to their accrual rate, when that would match our other employees and the Teamsters and the Police Guild. And that has zero dollar direct cost. Of course, that could lead to a little bit more accrual in the vacation bank for different employees that would be paid out later, but we don't anticipate that would be significant. We do a proposal to add management leave for exempt employees at a variable rate depending on the position of the person, and the details of that are outlined in your memo. That has a zero dollar direct cost. Again, this could lead to some accrual of vacation. To date, this has not been a significant cost to the city, and our accrual bank is in the realm of $55,000 a year right now in the budget. The medical benefits, we are proposing to increase the dependent match from 80% to 90% to match our represented groups and to match our comparable cities as well, and that has a cost of approximately $30,300 a year. Now, Janela had just explained that we also adjusted the projections for the represented groups, and this table shows us the projected staffing costs as a whole over the years, showing all three groups with salary adjustments going forward. So you can see that in the first year, it is in the $2 million range, and then it goes down a little bit each year afterwards. The nonrepresented group ideally would have a raise in 2024, and the represented groups would be in '25. So, a little bit on the financial impacts. Of course, adding these projected expenses for the employee's salary benefits are significant. We've also seen a depreciation in our levy rate and over time compared to inflation. As we all know, there is a limit on how much we can raise our levy. It's 1% per year unless we have a ballot measure, and we know that inflation is more than 1% per year. We also need to start thinking about our future cost increases, our labor costs and our nonlabor costs. We need to be thinking about whether we're going to be maintaining our current levels of service or improving them, especially considering the growth that is occurring in our city. And so these are all things to keep in mind as we think about financial options. So staff did consider some alternatives on how to implement the adjustments to salaries. One option was to lower the goal of not meeting market, but being within 5% of market. One was to reduce the number of hours per week that staff work, to reduce services, and to look at council manic revenue increases. We can certainly come back to you at a future date with what the numbers will look like for adjusting salaries to within 5% of the market. We don't have all those details for you tonight, but that does continue to keep us in a place where we're not competitive with the market, and we would still need to look at ways that we can move towards getting to market in the future so that we can keep and retain employees. There is a jurisdiction locally who could not afford their salary adjustments and moved to a 32-hour work week. We are hearing some feedback from that. It's only been in place for a few months, but one, the level of service did not get decreased, and so the work still exists. And so it doesn't help keep business running as usual. And also, for those employees who were struggling at their pay rates, a lot of them had to go find second jobs for the three-day weekend. So I think there's a lot of challenges with that. We've broached this topic with our executive leadership team here and definitely felt like we'd all be working the 40 hours or more that we work to accomplish the goals that we have. Reduction of services is definitely an option, and we're willing to come back and talk to you further about that. I do believe that this would be an opportunity to engage with the community about what their expectations are for different service levels and to really think about what the options are for both revenues and reductions in services. I think that's a longer conversation than that we can broach tonight. And another set of options that we'll be talking to you further about are council manic revenue increases. I'll hand it back to Janela.
The financial data options. The general levy rate has been a steady decline prior to removing EMS costs due to the limit of 1% increases and council not using the highest lawful levy each year. That just keeps building year after year if you just take the 1% from the previous year. The city hall lease was only for four years, and the recreation levy was projected to start at 25 cents per thousand and is not working. It's about nine cents per thousand. This is the comparison of the highest lawful levy to the actual levy amount. The highest lawful levy is in blue, and our actual levy, you can see in 2019 where they met, and that is, and it's kind of like a seesaw here. And that's because that is when we did the levy lid lift, and that was the 25 cents for recreation. This is the comparison of the changes in the levy revenues to inflation. So the percent changes in levy revenues is in orange here, and inflation is in green. And then, let's see, where am I? Did I jump ahead? Inflation impacts cost of goods, services, consultants, and, oh, this is Carolyn. Thank you.
Yeah, this is just a, looking at the CPI for this region, we've talked a lot about inflation, and we just have to acknowledge that the costs that the city pays for goods, services, consultants, and contractors increases with inflation. And so this just gives you an idea of what that looks like over time. We looked at this one already. And one example of cost of services that has increased exponentially, and this one is a little bit unusual, but is our insurance pool premiums that the city pays. And over the last three years, our insurance pool premiums have increased 100%. And this is something completely out of our control. It is related to increased claims, higher verdict amounts, and the net loss of position of our current pool. But this is, there are a lot of things out of our control in the cost of goods and services, and so I think it's just something to be mindful of. So moving on to revenue options. So we've talked a little bit about property tax already, and that we are, the council is limited to 1% of the highest lawful levy without going to a ballot measure. So that's always a challenge. For sales tax, the city council has already implemented the city's optional tax for sales tax, so that's in play already. For development, we have impact fees and development fees. I think what's challenging for us to predict into the future is when our property tax and sales tax rates will increase based on growth. So we can only look ahead at property tax one year, and the others are, you know, looking further out is very difficult, and we don't end up projecting those growth rates in our projections. Business tax, we do not have, and that's something that the council consider. Understandably, there are pros and cons to that. Utility tax, we have utility taxes. They are not at the maximum limits, and that's something the council could consider. But I think a rough look at that indicated that it would generate less than $100,000 a year. And then there's obviously regulatory incentives to bring different kinds of businesses and development here that would garner more property tax or sales tax. I think there'll be some great ideas coming with our economic development strategy and comprehensive plan that could enlighten us as to whether there's anything we should change in our existing incentive program. So we've talked a little bit now about the general levy. That one, we had to reduce the rate to omit the fire revenues. Also, due to the lower property value increases in this past year, the projected increase in the general levy is only 0.04% in 2024, whereas last year it was 24%. So there's basically very little increase in the levy amount for this coming year. And then we are going to present some options to increase revenues using the levy here in a minute, but also wanted to let you know that we could still look at these other options if you're interested. So the utility taxes and the BNO tax are also options that are council manic.
Okay, and now we'll talk about the implementation strategies. So the reason we're talking about property taxes is because those are our biggest revenue generators for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. So just to, that's why we're talking about it. And the, this table here is where I'm trying to explain the removal of the 1.69 million per Resolution 873 that we did with the voters annexing with fire. So the 2023 amount that we levied was $4,810,136, and that was with the, that was in November of 2022. And the additional levy amount from new construction was $46,000. And if we remove the 1.694 million, then this would leave a balance of $3,162,263. And because, and so then what the assessors do is they send me a letter, and they say, this is the amount, this 3 million, 3.16 million that you can add your 1% to for the year, or you can do the highest lawful levy, which is the difference between that and your highest lawful levy, and add 1% to that amount. As you saw in that prior table, there was a graph of when we levied in 2019. That was when we did the highest lawful levy, so then that left it at zero. So then the next year, it just built up a little bit, and it's just built over the years. In 2024, so they're going to send us that $3,162, In 2024, so they're going to send us that 3,162 and tell us that you can add 1% to it. We don't know what new construction is going to be for 2024 and 2025. So then, then we would remove the 1.6. This is how we thought we were doing it, but it's not feasible. We're just going to do it in this first year, the 1.6 million. Otherwise, by 2020, I think it's 2026, we would end up in the red, and we wouldn't have any property taxes that we would, the city would be doing. So we would just do it in this first year. So that's why I showed this table here just to, because I think there was a question from somebody about it that we were going to do this every year, but we can't. We believe the original intent and the current recommendation is to only take that reduction once as it diminishes the value of the levy by taking the reduction once. So you see, you have that 4.8 million. The 46,000 for new construction, you remove the 1.69 million per that resolution, and then that leaves your balance of 3 million. And then the next year, they send me a letter, and then 3.16 million, I can, we can add 1% to that, and then that's the amount that we can levy, so on and so forth in perpetuity until the end of time. And then we can add 1% to the highest lawful levy, and that keeps building if we just continue just to add the 1% to this amount. This revenue option, so the general levy calculation with the highest lawful levy. So the levy amount is based on the previous year's levy approved by the council, which is again that 4.8 million. This is the bank capacity to get to the highest lawful levy. And then the additional money from new construction, this is their estimate. And then you remove that 1.69 million. And then this is the balance of 3.9 million that we would have. In 2024, it would be 3.9 million. We would have no bank capacity because we had used it the prior year. So nothing, and maybe it's $100 or something. And then the new construction is to be determined with, we wouldn't remove that 1.69 again. And then our balance would be at or greater than 3.9 million. And then it would just go on again until perpetuity. So the revenue options that we have is to maintain the proposed 2024 levy rate without any increases at all. So we would just keep it at 4.8 million without a 1% increase. Our base rate plus the new construction, we would remove that 1.69 million. This 3 million, 3.16 million would be the amount of our revenue source. The general levy rate would be 60 cents. The average rate per household would be 619,000, or per average household, that's worse, 619,000 would be $371. The difference between 2023 and the 2024 levy rates is a hundred, a reduction of $191. And this is basic, pretty much what we had promised the voters because they're going to get an additional tax from RFA. And for this scenario, the ending fund balance between 2023 is 10 million, 10 and a half million. And 2028, it's going to end at 2.8 million. And these amounts, they do not include that general obligation bond amount that we levy every year to pay for city hall. And then this next one is maintain the proposed 2024. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you. I had a question on this, these charts with the levies. Is that, are these final numbers including the salary increase, proposed salary increase, or not including? In other words, at the end of the day, if these do not include the salary increase?
Your ending fund balance would be more.
Would be a lot less.
These include the, yeah, these include the salary.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this is the scenario that would happen if the salaries went up. Yeah. So for this scenario, you have your base rate of 4.8 million. Then you would increase it with that 1% increase plus the new construction of 46,000. Then you're, then you would remove that 1.69 million, which would leave us with 3.2 million. And the general levy rate in 2024 for us would be 0.61 cent. And that would be about $377 for a household with a median average house of 619,000. And the difference between those two would be in reduction of $185. And again, you can see the 23 ending fund balance is 10 and a half million, and then by 2028, it would be 3 million. This one would, this next one is using the highest lawful levy without the 1% increase. So you have the highest lawful levy, and the 1% would be 5 and a half million. Less that 1.69 million, plus the new construction, would give you 3.9 million. Your general levy rate would be 75 cents. And I don't know if you guys remember, last year it was 95 cents. The general levy rate in 2024 per average house would be $461. And the difference between the 2023 and 2024 is a reduction of $101. And you have 10, 2023 and 2028, those amounts. You can see it jumps up quite a bit. Yes?
Thanks, Mayor. Janelle, sorry, just want to make sure that I'm following. So the, I guess the top says without the 1% increase, but then column two says and 1% increase. I guess, can you walk me through that again?
Oh, yeah, so it is with the 1% increase.
Okay, so this. Hey, look, I'm still sort of awake.
You're following.
Trying.
Oh, yeah, the next one is, so this one is without, which this should be without the 1% increase.
Perfect, thank you.
The next one is the highest lawful levy with the 1% increase. So you have your 5.5 million plus new construction, reduce the 1.69 million. And then you have 76 cents. With the difference between that would be $94. And you can see the ending fund balance ranges of 10 and a half million to 7 million. And then Carolyn will talk about the next steps.
Thanks, Janelle. Just want to acknowledge how much work Janelle and several of our directors have done to update the financial projections. It's been a heavy lift, so thank you. So the recommendation that we have tonight is to consider at a future meeting a revised salary ordinance that's based on Attachment A to meet market, to add management leave for directors, this deputy city manager and city manager at 80 hours per year, for the executive leadership team managers, city engineer and commanders at 40 hours per year, and other exempt staff at 24 hours per year. We also recommend an additional hour of vacation per month for employees who served more than 21 years and increasing the dependent medical insurance match from 80 to 90%. We would request that council consider a proposal to increase the levy rate by 1% and seek the highest lawful levy for 2024. That would put us in a better position to plan for the future and think about the other challenges the city may be facing financially. However, there is time in any of the scenarios for the city council to consider, to adopt, to adopt the proposal and consider a longer-range financial strategy. As you could see from the slides, even in 2028, with the do-nothing scenario, we would still have a considerable ending fund balance. There, there are options for us to consider how to move together and plan for that between now and then. And certainly, the community could assist in advising on ways to do that with you and staff. So with that, I'm happy to, oh, I just wanted to talk about next steps. Certainly, we will come back and answer any questions or formalize any proposals that you want to take forward. And then, at this point in time, if council were to take action this year, the proposal probably would take effect on January 1st. And then we would look at reevaluating salaries every few years as part of the budget process.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I'll just do one. Because I got like pages, because there's a lot I don't quite evaluate. But, and then we can go into each department. The first thing, I was going to immediately say no because nobody had ever given us the financial forecast papers. And you can't make a decision until you understand the budget and the forecast. And Brian got these, but none of us else have had these. So I went through my notes on December 22 of last year, and we talked about the budget, about how we were spending more than we were taking in. So what happened? I mean, it's, we're just going to look to the voters to pay for it because the $3.3 million for the RFA, that's kind of what the council was going to look into, to spend money on the citizens. And then all of a sudden, so we don't even have that chance to look at that. And so it was, there's just some assumptions that were put in here. I wish all our projects would get this kind of scrutiny, and maybe we'd, we'd get more projects done. But it's not about not wanting to give people more money. It's not like that. I'm sure Linwood is saying stuff to Mount Lake Terrace. We've heard that for years. We've heard all our morale is completely low. So I want to know what we're doing about morale, maybe outside of money. There's just a lot going on. And in December, I looked at the budget, and I looked back at my notes, and it said it was perfectly balanced. There was no issues whatsoever. It was guaranteed. And now it's come out that we've missed some things. So how do I know that we haven't missed anything?
I don't know what you mean by we're missing something.
You came back to us, and I'm not pointing at you. I'm just saying who I heard it from. There was a couple of things in the budget that weren't accounted for. And I can go back and look. I was trying to look tonight, but I didn't find it. And so I didn't have enough.
Yeah, if you could find that, because I don't know what you mean.
So the budget is exactly the same as it was from December 22 of 2022.
The, in the forecast, so there's two different things that Brian or Mayor Protam had gotten, was a projection with, for the salaries in there. And then they adjusted everything. Then the other one was the forecast. So there's a difference between the two. There's, a projection is something that you are trying to work towards, and so you have to project out, right? A forecast is, you're just keeping everything status quo, so there's no changes. And this is what it looks like, is going to look like in the future. So the forecast there that he has is based off of the last ordinance that was adopted. I put the budget in there. So it's going to be different because it's based off of the last ordinance that we had an amendment for to the budget. So it's not going to match your budget book. Is this on, yeah, it's not going to match your budget book because there's been, I think, what, three, four amendments, three or four amendments since we adopted the budget.
And so I can't see this. But, so where's the money coming from? And then has it, and then we've got attorney costs going up and everything else. So that's all in here? All the different costs that are going up is all in this budget?
No, I did not put the attorney costs increasing in there.
I mean, that's just one of many. I mean, I know there's.
Another thing I did do adjustment for in that projection is the Internal Service Fund. So the utility funds pay the general fund for all of the services that we provide. So I updated that. So if you notice that line in there, that Internal Service Fund in that projection that he has.
Even with my glasses, I can't see.
Yeah. That has, that changed a lot.
And one of the other things, I want to make sure it's clear, especially for public works. I was going through the budget last night. And you talk about, let me get back to it. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page is, so water, sewer, and street fund, we are only talking, because 90% of most of our employees come out of the general fund, right? So we're talking, I think, I was looking at half a person, and it was like eight and one, 10. So how many people are in public works altogether? Because these three funds that you talk about here, those funds can only go to pay for those people. They can't pay for anybody else. Is that correct? Because you said the budget is healthy. And when you're looking at certain funds, they can only pay for certain things. They just can't pay for everybody's. And the debt services and different things like that, I don't know where it's put into here so I can understand.
There's a line in there that says debt service in each one.
I believe you, I just can't see it.
We, we did account for, every person has an allocation to sometimes multiple funds. And so that was all part of this calculation. And so there was a couple of slides in our presentation tonight that showed the cost by fund, so that you could look at that.
So I was trying to put a chart together of, let me see, trillion notes here, of what it would cost a citizen. So for the RFA next year, they're going to see on their bill, I just, scenario one or two, I can't remember which one, is either $388.
From the city of Mount Lake Terrace.
Right. Just, let's just say average of 388. I've got some different numbers here.
Yeah, because there are four different scenarios, so they all vary. I think it goes from like 371 to 388 or something like that.
Exactly, 388.70.
That's the highest lawful levy. This one is the maintain it without increasing 1% at all. Is $191. So 377 is if you maintain it, and then the highest lawful levy with a 1% increase would be $468.
For RFA?
No, I didn't, we didn't include RFA because I don't know what RFA's numbers are.
No, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we have to go through all the different scenarios in order to make a $2.2 million plus because it's really not 2.2 million. It's going to be more. And I saw the different increases, and it was for COLAs. But what about all those 5%? And so I'm just going to ask a lot of questions. I'm not trying to be mad at anybody or do anything because if I could, I would give everybody money because what better way to make people happy? And that seems like the goal of what's going on here, is to make everybody happy. And so I understand that. But I would have liked to have seen different scenarios as well. You know, we talked about this a couple of years ago. You know, do we start at the pavilion? And do we take the lowest salary and work from there? Or do we do medical one year and the raises another year? But just some of the assessments for the citizens, for a council person, it's kind of hard to swallow because you have the RFA going to be implemented next year. And if we, you know, look at doing other things to increase things, it limits us, like the 25%. I would never go out for a levy for, you know, for asking people for 25 cents. I would ask for the whole booting barrel of getting a new pool. And so, you know, do we offset what we're going to pay? Or do we look at cutting out the pool? I mean, there's so many horrible scenarios, and we've talked about these for years of, you know, having the pool go to the YMCA or, or doing different things. And it's not that I don't want to see people make more money. I just, our biggest concern is, some of us have been through those horrible cuts. And we don't, we'd rather have more employees than cut them. It's kind of hard to explain. But the future of. It's kind of hard to explain, but the future of the funds coming in, I, we haven't built anything in for recessions, you know, we've got two wars going on, we have some uncertainties going on. So I'll just cut to the chase, and I'll ask some of the questions later. You guys, you guys, you believe that you've balanced the budget, it'll be fine, there's no problems with giving everybody raises, and, you know, when you give vacation hours, it does cost the city something, it's just not zero-sum game. Somebody else has to fill in for that person. But, so you believe everything on here, as a council member, we shouldn't question everything. We can afford everything that you gave us, because the recommendations were at the highest level. And when you look at negotiations, and we just talked about this a little bit, can you tell us what you've already put into the budget for the unions?
So, just a couple of things I'd like to address real quick. One of the things that was mentioned was the goal of this exercise is to make everybody happy, and that is not the goal. The goal is to attract and retain qualified employees.
But, but we talked about everybody's unhappy, because I remember asking that question, and I was told specifically, all our employees, all of them are extremely unhappy, all of them. And so, that's where I got that quote from.
There are some concerns, but the goal of this exercise is not to make everybody happy. I just wanted to be clear about that. The other part of this is.
Logical.
The increases that we have put in for, as placeholders, as was mentioned during the presentation, for union representatives. The reason why that data can't be found in the presentation is because they're placeholders, and we want to make sure that it stays that way, and we don't start negotiating outside of the negotiating table.
But I can't really see the place where it's in, because I wish the presentation said we're going to do that.
It is. You won't find the number in there.
I'm just asking a question. How, how do I know that it's been built in?
Yeah, we used a, what we thought was a below, a reasonable number to project those increases, to give you data to something to look for, because we wanted to present the impact on the full budget.
Okay. That's good. We're getting there. It's just, there's just a lot of questions. And I'm sorry if I used the word happy, but I was trying to make the scenario of, what are we going to do to motivate the employees after they receive their raise? And happy is just a good word, and I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but I'm just trying to understand that with the recommendations that you have here, and this is from you, because you're our city manager, so these are your recommendations, is kind of the whole boot and barrel, or whatever that saying is, without any chance for the council to say, well, why don't we do it in increments? Why don't we do it in this? And what this feels to me, and I guess why I feel a little threatened by it, is you put this on the council for us to kind of be the bad person, without us really understanding the budget. And we don't want to be that bad person. We want to give people raises, we want to retain it. But there's just things that maybe just aren't answered for myself anyhow, and so I'm hoping we ask some more questions.
Yeah, that's why we're providing these presentations, so that we can make sure you have all of the information you need in order to make these decisions. We, you know, we know these are tough decisions. And how to do it, providing alternatives, Carolyn, Janella, Jennifer, Leslie, Lan, among many others, including the department directors, have spent a lot of time to provide you all the information that we can, and we're not asking you to make a decision this evening.
And I'm really happy that you guys spent all this time, really, I am. I'm not negotiating that, I'm not diminishing it. It's just, I just want to make sure the numbers run out, because you heard me in that last meeting, people tell me stuff, and then I find out later it's not right. And so, I question things, and it's not to be mean to anybody, but it's just so I can understand what's going on. So like with the recommendations, I would ask, what if you took out number two? What would that do? I mean, do you have to have everything on the recommendations for the increase in the levy rate by 1% and seek the highest for it to pan out? Is that what all this is based on? Is there?
No, there are four different scenarios in there. One is keeping everything status quo, 4.8 million of what we asked for last year, and then, taking out the 1.6 million, and then, you can do that scenario. Then, in my, I can make a projection for each one of those. I gave the one for scenario two in there, because that's what was asked. But I could provide those things, I don't mind doing that at all, you know? I mean.
Did I ask?
No.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I asked it right. Brian's going to fix it for me. Sorry, you ask.
All right. Well, first of all, what she was referring, I think, Councilmember Sonmore was referring to is not the different options of property tax scenarios, but different options for the salary and benefits packages, and, and, you know, determining, okay, here's what it would cost for this, the city, if we just did this piece of it? Or, in other words, breaking, giving different options for consideration for salary and benefits, so it's not just one package, here it is, all or nothing. Right? I think that's what you were.
Oh, yeah. What happens if we remove, left the levy rate the way it was in your recommendations? How would that work with the numbers?
That is on this slide right here. Maintain the proposed 2024 levy rate without any increases.
And that's including medical and raises?
Yes.
But if council would like to see the cost for implementation of each piece of this, we can certainly provide that.
Yeah, I have it all together, I can get that for you.
This is the only thing I'd like to see. I mean, this.
Yeah, that's what I meant. That, I could provide that, if that is what you want. For each scenario, you would just get the whole thing, whole kit and caboodle, and then you could just see the ending fund balance for each year, for each different scenario. And the reason we're looking primarily at property taxes, if I had the forecast up, or the projection up, I could show you line by line, all of the revenue sources in there, and believe me, we looked. We were like, what could we do in order to increase this? And we talked about development revenues, getting more developers in, trying to, you know, get people to come into the city, and we know it's going to grow because of the sound transit and everything, you know, and, so that could happen in the future, and then, what was the other one? BNO taxes, looking at that, but we don't collect those. Utility taxes, we already collect those, and those are what they are. And gambling, you know, the gambling revenues, I don't know how we could increase those, maybe put a casino somewhere or something, you know?
People that go gamble?
You know, there's all different types of scenarios that we looked at, and the only one that we could really think of was the property taxes, because there are four, like we showed, there are four different scenarios for those that we know of, right? So, and those are, the property tax is, unfortunate to say, it is our revenue driver. Linwood has sales tax, you know, because they got the mall and everything, so they have that. That's their revenue driver. Juno, where I worked in the city in borough, Juno, they had marine passenger fees was their revenue driver.
And see, that's what I was exactly talking about. Linwood is not us, you know, because they do have all that other revenue coming in. And I do know they're our neighbors and stuff, but it's.
But you, I can get each, so each scenario for each slide in here, there are four slides, I can get you the detail behind that for each scenario, and that'll show you.
How about this? This is what I, I really, the nuts and bolts. Okay, somebody gets their property bill next year, they're going to see the big RFA, and they're going to, aha, and they forgot they voted it in, right? If we start increasing this, can you give us a scenario on how much more? I want to like know the total package of what it would cost a citizen.
Not just the city. Not, not just what the city's charging, but the whole levy, the whole property tax that the citizen's paying. So I'm paying $3,000.
Yes, yes.
How is that? Sorry. I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
School teacher, her principal.
I'm at the end, I wanted to.
I think I understand what you mean, is providing the total tax burden for a household in Mount Lake Terrace.
With the RFA. So because that's going to be.
Yeah, total tax burden.
Yeah.
So something like we provided when we went for the annexation, we had presentations every time, and Stefan would say, this is how much it's going to cost the citizen for, or resident for the RFA, and then, this is how much it's going to cost for the city. So like, it'll be $371, and then, plus, this is how much you're going to see on your bill from the RFA.
Thank you. Trying to make the chart is, okay, I've got public works over here, and they've got money coming in. So maybe their employees, we can cross that 10 of them off, right? And then, so we take the next, what, you know, 32, or was it 47 or 42? And then, we look at how much, and where does that $3.3 million cover part of those? And then, you know, it's just kind of like a scenario. It seems like, okay, public works, it sounds like, and, correct me if I'm wrong, we'd be able to cover those employees from that. So let's take, I don't know, is it, I don't know how many people that is, is it 10? 35?
35.
Out of the 42?
There, and there are portions of people too, you know? So there are some FTEs that are 100% in a fund, and then, there's some FTEs that are portioned over several funds. And that's all part of our calculation, and we've, we've shown you the cost per fund.
I still don't, but what if we just took those people out? What, what remains? Because it sounds like they're already paid for, right? Because of all the different calculations you did before, and then, don't you have a certain amount? It's just trying to understand where.
So the, the people who charge to the general fund are reflected in the general fund numbers. The total numbers are what you're seeing, the 1.9 million, that's the total across all the funds. It's not just the general fund. So we definitely have accounted for the distribution of the cost across all the funds.
So that shows me what we're spending, but, and then it's, sorry, Brian, it's reflected in here on how it affects the budget.
It's reflected in the projections. Yeah. And just wanted to touch on a couple of other things. One, we are using the end of fund balance to achieve this goal. We've made that clear in the four different options, even no matter whether we stay at the current levy rate, or we increase the levy rate, we'll be eating into the end of fund balance. And so, at some point, we would have to make a correction to a long-term funding strategy. So we haven't been shy about that. I hope that's been clear throughout the presentation. There's no impact to the reserves through this scenario. At this point in time, we have fulfilled our reserve deposits every year along the way. And the, I just want to make it clear that the nonrepresented staff have not, and their salaries have not kept up with the other employees in the city. And so, this is a long.
We're not talking about those 42 or 45 people we talked about last time. It says nonrepresented and represented, so how many people is that?
Right now, there's 154 or so FTEs. There's approximately over 200 people. The projections account for the represented staff. The survey that we're talking about is for nonrepresented staff, which was for, I think, 54 positions, but it's more, more staff than that.
And it's not the unions?
The unions are not part of the salary and benefits survey, but we did account for projections that, in the budget, so that we had a clear understanding of how the budget would look over the next few years.
Where did this, sorry, you just lost me. What survey?
The survey, the salary and benefit survey that we've been talking about is for the nonrepresented staff.
The, the one that you sent out the survey for?
No, no, no. The, this, this whole study that we've been doing, evaluating salary adjustments.
Right.
So we, we broke it down.
But now, we're looking at represented staff as well in this whole scenario.
So, no. We broke it down into two different parts in order to provide you with as much information as we could. One.
I'm trying to be stupid, but it says right, nonrepresented and representative.
Sure. So what we did was, we conducted a salary survey for the nonrepresented employees. When we did the financial projections, we included both represented and nonrepresented to make, ensure that council has a full picture of the, what the impact will be in next year through the end, through 2028. So there's two different segments. One is the salary and benefits survey for our nonrepresented employees. The other is the financial projection based on those updated numbers.
And what is our ending balance that we're eating into?
10 and a half million. So this slide shows you the represented staff costs per year. And in the different levy scenarios at the bottom of each slide, it shows you how much end of fund balance we'd be using.
Maybe, do you have a question to go on top of that?
If I, if I may, for a minute, yes. So, thank you. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and it is an overwhelming task, especially considering that we are starting from a place where our books were left to you in rough shape, let's just say. And you've done an amazing job getting us to where we are, and understanding it, and helping us move forward. And let me also say, I support making the adjustments that are necessary to retain and attract staff. The challenge is paying for it. And I do not support tax increases on our citizens. I think what parts of what, to be able to do this, so I think we've got to, so on one hand, we need to do this, and we need to build it into the budget, but the balance sheet, and what you're saying is, it starts, we, our ending fund balance this year, or coming year, it would be 10 million. And based on where we're going over the next six years, it would end at 2 or 3 million without making any adjustments. We're still in the black, we still have funds, but it's going in the wrong direction. So year seven or eight is where we run into trouble, and we have to make decisions on either cuts, or adjustments, or something. So that, to me, is where the challenge is. And, and so then, looking at the tax scenarios, I mean, first of all, we've always taken the 1% tax, you know, property tax increase. So to me, that's a given, but let's do that, as we always have. But I think what part of, part of what Councilmember Sonmore was trying to point out is that is, that our residents aren't just paying a city property tax. They're paying a city property tax, a state property tax, and school property tax, a hospital district property tax, RFA property tax. Now, in other words, it's a lot. And we, we have to protect our residents' pocketbooks. We can't go indulge ourselves. But that's not to say that we can't and shouldn't take care of our staff who are doing the work to provide the services for our community. So that's where, I, I think, we've got to figure out how, and I've said this before, you know, it's. you know where I'm coming from, economic development. We need to do this. We need to be able to pay our staff what they, what they need to get their job done, provide the services. And we need to focus on economic development to increase our revenue, to be able to pay for everything else. But you can't build that into a forecast, is the challenge, right? So my suggestion, I guess, at this point is let's move forward, assuming there's a consensus in, in making the adjustments that are necessary for salary, for the salaries. But let's take, take a close look and figure out, are there areas that we don't need to do the full package all at one time, or different scenarios recognizing the budget challenges? But if that's what we need to do, then, I mean, I guess just give us some options to consider on that side of it. But we need to do it. We need to, we need to make the adjustments that are necessary. But on the other hand, I think we, we, we need to consider carefully our revenue options. And so for, currently, I'm, I, I think we can all support the 1% on the base rate because that's what we would, that's what we normally do. But if we're going to start talking about additional increases, that's where we need to have, sorry, the discussion of, I think a much more visible discussion with our public and our residents as to, are you supportive of increasing, you know, additional increases to your property tax to be able to pay for services or for something else? Or that's where we, we just, we're going to need to spend some time. Sorry, I know, we've got 10 minutes left, so I'm going to wrap it up and just say, yes, let's be cautious. We need some options. And we don't need to do all of it right away because we need, we need to have a very clear, transparent discussion with our residents about any additional revenue options to be able to help keep our ending fund balance balanced. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know it's late, and I'm going to talk anyway because I feel like I have things that I want to make sure that I convey. One, thank you. I appreciate all of the work. I know that it's been a lot. And for me at least, I think there is a moral issue around pay. And I think if we are asking folks to do jobs, that it is important that we are at least meeting the market. I think we could have even a whole different conversation about whether the market is keeping up with the real costs of things. But I think it is an important thing. And I think to Mayor Proton Wall's point, I think it's a good opportunity for us to have some conversation with our community about revenue, like about the very real challenges of our tax structure, right? I mean, property tax is really the one lever we have. It is not super equitable. There are challenges with it. But it is the one major lever that we have as a city, especially as a small city without a lot of economic development. And so, you know, given that, I mean, I think one of the things that would be interesting for me and maybe helpful is we are helping our community to understand some of these things is the real value of, like, what folks were paying 20 years ago before the 1% cap went into effect and like how that translates into real dollar, or into like comparable dollars today, right? Like, I assume that we are paying less, but I guess I don't know that. So I think that would be helpful for folks to understand. But I do think a conversation with our community, I mean, taxes are how we do the things that we collectively want to do. They are how we come together to accomplish our goals. And candidly, because of lack of revenue, we haven't moved the needle on a lot of goals that our community time and again tells us they want to see progress on. I think people don't want to see us waste money, but if we are using money to accomplish the things that they have asked us to do, I think that is, that is why we are here, right? And so I think we do have that conversation. We talk about our goals and the things that we are working toward and how they want to see us accomplish them and the timeline that they want to see us accomplish them. But I will say, like, I think there is a question, my question is, what's the cost of not making these investments, right? I think we have seen that. And candidly, it's been frustrating as a council member to come in and to not be able to maintain staffing at a level to even maintain the services that we have committed to, let alone be able to move on to some of the really important and proactive things that our community has charged us with and shares time and again that they support. And so I think it's an important conversation. I do worry about the budgetary piece. And I think that's just going to have to be something that we are keeping a keen eye on and hopeful that, you know, making sure that we have the right staff in place to support all of our economic development that's coming, you know, moves us where we need to. And if not, that we are willing to have hard conversations about what that means in terms of city services, so. But I appreciate the work. I support, you know, moving forward with a plan to get us to a place where we are meeting the market. And I will stop talking.
Councilmember Woodard?
I was really going to try not to talk. Only five minutes left, but I have to say thank you, Councilmember Murray, for taking challenge to the, or taking, taking to task the word indulge. I echo exactly what you just described, and I would just say, you know, that's how much it's starting to cost to live in this city if you want it to truly be a city. But nonetheless, I wanted to double back and say, one thing I can never really understand, and I don't know which slide it was, so just put any of that have at least five years listed across on the bar. I don't know if it was a projection. I don't know what, you know, we've got a lot of words. So.
Can we extend it?
Yeah, that one right there. When I look at 23 all the way to 28, in your calculation, is this city still 24,000 people? It's that right now in 2023. When we get to 2028, is it still calculated wise at 24,000 people? And really, I'm going back to this idea of our only lever is property tax. I presume more people means Steve Woodard, who's already been here, pays less, not we just keep stacking. And now we're in the millions, because we won't even do that now. So why would I do that in 2028, right? So again, if my reasoning is there with four minutes left in the longest day ever, is 2023 24,000 people? Is 2028 24,000 people? Or are there other variables in there that we have just, again, we put these domes over things, and that's not going to come, that's not going to happen? I'm like, we're literally talking about last night in this room that I don't get to tell you about, the advisory group trying to figure out where they're going to put, I think we decided with 600 houses? I mean, it was something unbelievable that I'm like, isn't that 600 new revenue streams? But again, I go 23 to 28, and we're mandated to do that one. So I'll let you answer the question. Is 2023's calculation and 2028's calculation, well, you have it right there, presume that we're just at 24,000 people?
Yeah, I didn't put the population factor in here.
Yeah.
I just put, and so this right here is just the salaries and benefits. This is just salaries and benefits in here. That's all this is right here. The other projections that are in the projection and the forecast are increased about, I based it off of what the state has and some different other sources that I looked at. And they're projecting about like three and a half, 3% increase. So that's what I put everything else at.
Sure. And again, I'm really just trying to get at the, not only, not only who is paying, but how many of us is paying.
Yeah, so I put it as 3%, but I didn't factor in that the, you know, the population would change. Maybe there'd be more development, which would increase revenue with development and.
Which I also recognize might mean more staff. But again, you have to.
Yeah, exactly.
Move together if we do it right.
There's all these different things that you have to think of when you do that, so that I didn't put that into effect with like the development, because.
Which I just think would be good for us to remember as we're having this. Some things get to be static, other things don't. I'm like, wait a minute, they're all dynamic. So everything's a wild card. Asteroid could hit right now. We just, you know, come on, man, where are we going with this? This is, sounds like a very thoughtful approach to figuring out how not to have to be the bad guys and say, well, you get a raise now and you don't. And I've got a balance fund that I'm nervous about for eight years out the, you know, eight years out. We should be, but it's like, there's so much that's happening that I would hope we adjust as we go. So anyway, appreciate the conversation. You got two minutes to figure out how to close this out.
Councilmember Pineda?
I'll be quick. Thank you, Madam Murray. I'd just like to remind us and caution us, I think, coming into this role, an outsider, been concerned about decisions that weren't made in the past and I think are, you know, issues that are coming to roost now. And I think, you know, not, you know, not doing enough at this moment will, will only sort of push things further down the road. And I really like what we're talking about in terms of breaking out costs and understanding all of the knobs and levers to turn and pull, and also understanding like what good community, what resident inclusion and engagement looks like. But it really would encourage us and hope that we don't kick the can. And it, you know, it costs to run a city that can execute economic development that we'd like to see. I think, you know, we're also talking about land use and other barriers to economic development earlier tonight. I think it's really important that we, we understand what it takes to get us places because we've had plans in place that really haven't met the mark yet. And we've had visions, but, you know, have struggled to execute them. So I think just want to put some emphasis on the value of staff and the need to, you know, honor their work and the vision, or honor their work executing our vision up here. Thank you.
Are we allowed to extend, or did we, is the 11 o'clock the final?
Yeah, you're, you certainly can. At this point, I think everybody's pretty done, to be blunt.
Well, we're, yeah, so it's just reports after this.
Yeah, if council still wants to do that, then you can extend another half hour if you like.
I'm hoping that it won't be half an hour of reports.
Just get me started. Wind me up. Yeah, we don't need reports. Next meeting.
So we can, we can save all of this for the work study next week?
Sure.
Including your report?
Absolutely.
Okay, then.
I'm putting no on extension anywhere.
So we're not going to be able to extend anyways, so.
Mayor, I have one piece of new business, or personal point. I will be out of town the next two weeks and may miss next meeting, but hope to attend remotely the following week. So just would request an absence for next week if I cannot make it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So if we're going to be doing our reports later and new business, more new business later, I'm going to adjourn the meeting tonight. We're adjourned. But if we went to 11:30, that was our longest meeting.